I started getting all day charged and then realized the charger was not plugged in. So, well, that didn't help me any.
Everybody ready? Oh, you got to list tomorrow. Everybody ready? We'll call the meeting to order in accordance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-4-80E, South Carolina Code 1987 is amended. All the media in the media area have been notified of the date, time, and location and agenda of the meeting. We'll have our prayer by Ms. Gore, followed by the pledge with Mr. Jeffords.
Ladies and gentlemen, please. Loving and gracious God, You are indeed the giver of all good gifts. And we thank You today for all Your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events, and for all our staff members, both the teaching and support members. We ask that You bless them abundantly, and we continue to seek Your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us the insight to lead with integrity, but our decisions may reflect what is good and right. Keep us from short-sightedness and pettiness and help us to make decisions that are in the good of all and guide us and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek Your will in all that we do and say. In Your name we pray. Amen.
I love the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I take a motion to approve the agenda. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens' comments? Okay. Our next regular board meeting will be Monday, September the 22nd here in the meeting room. And then October 13th will be our next regular board meeting. The other's a work session, sorry. Have a motion to approve the minutes for the 11th and the 25th of August. Y'all want to combine those together?
Yes.
Let's see, I'll move to this. Combine the two and it'll be acceptable.
Okay, I have a motion. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Adult education admissions. Can I have a motion to approve the adult education admissions?
Say move.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And our budget reports.
So, our budget reports. Ms. Douglas is feeling ill and had to leave, so I'm pinching in for her. So, if there are any questions. But I, it was a pretty normal month. It's the beginning of the year, so there are a lot more revenues and expenditures.
Anybody have any questions about the budget report? It's kind of the beginning of the fiscal year. This is just the July report. All right, we'll move on to our assessment data. Dr. Ferguson?
Dr. Nichols is going to walk us through some really interesting data from the state assessments and look at both how we are doing from last year, but also put that in the context of the state and the PD. So, Dr. Nichols?
Good evening, board. I'm excited to present some of the information that we have here and then talk about some of the ways that we're looking to improve. We've got some things to celebrate. We've got some things to keep working on. So, as we start, I just want to start.
The way I do with my own staff meeting is that our focus for '25, '26 is clarity, kindness, and commitment using high-quality instructional materials for implementation. The data source that we will be able to know if we've been using those appropriately is the iReady data and SC Ready EOC. I would also like to add that our classroom walkthroughs will also help us guide that work. Early literacy for the science of reading or data source for that is iReady, Universal Screener, and Benchmore Data. Seventy-five percent of ELA and math by 2030 is our north store, just like it is for the state. So, data source is again SC Ready, and I didn't put EOC, but EOC. Students graduating college and career ready, and of course, the data source there is our SC report card. So, I start our meetings with that, and then I talk about our PLC model. And then, as you look at this data, I want you to think about those four questions. These are the four questions that we should ask every time we are together with teachers talking about data. What do we want the students to learn? How do we know they learned it? How do we know if they didn't learn it? And what do we do if they already know it? So, this is kind of the preface before we get into some of this deep data of where we're thinking and where our team is supporting through our curriculum coordinators and coaches, training, and making sure that we're working through this lens. All right, we're going to start with elementary. SC Ready ELA, the three through five average meets and exceeds. I am proud to say that we did, where you see the bold bit, that means that the grade level improved from the 23, 24 to the 24, 25 data. I would like to specifically point out, and I'll talk about this again, but Rockington Elementary had great gains. Roswell did, Carolina, and Thornwell. And I'll talk more about those specifically at the end. Our math, three through five average meets and exceeds. Six out of our nine elementary schools saw positive growth. Rockington, again, saw some great growth, as well as Lamar. So, our highlights are all of our elementary schools showed positive growth in ELA and 3-5. Fourth grade ELA exceeded our state average growth. And there is some slides at the very end. For those of you who love data, you can look at that and see where they exceeded the state growth average. And then, schools or grade levels that had double-digit gains. I'm very proud of this. Our Rockington Elementary, third grade, had 10.2 points. And our fifth grade had 17.6 growth points. Our Carolina Elementary, third grade, with 24.2, is pretty impressive. Fourth grade with 14.6. Rosenwall went out, third grade, with 30.91. Fourth grade, 36.1. JL Kane's fourth grade group, 19.2 points. St. John's Elementary, fourth grade, with 17.9. Thornwell Elementary's fourth grade was 28.3. And Lamar Spalding Elementary's fifth grade was 13.6. Six out of the nine elementary schools showed positive gains in math, three through five average. Third and fifth grade exceeded the state's growth average. School levels that had double-digit gains are Rockington Elementary. They actually had double-digit gains in every single grade level. So, very proud of them for that. Carolina in third grade had 23.2 and fourth grade, 14.6. Rosenwall in fourth grade had 11.1. I do want to say that they didn't have growth in one grade because they had 100% last year and they had 100% again this year. So, it was a wash, but a good wash. Then you have JL Kane, third grade, 19.2, and fourth grade, 19.2 again. You have St. John's with fourth grade with 17.9. You have Thornwell Elementary, third grade, 22.1. Fourth grade, 28.3. If you remember, they were on our CSI list and have exited. Lamar Spalding Elementary, fourth grade, 10.8, and fifth grade with 10 points. So, we're very proud of that. It doesn't mean we don't have more work to do, but we're very proud of the work that was done last year. Middle schools. And middle schools, for average, for ELA, meets and exceeds. We went up in all three schools. Hart's School Middle saw double-digit gains. Math, six through eight. We went up two out of the three, but you can see we still have a lot of work to do here. And I will say that Darlington Middle, kind of, it was also one that was kind of equal. So, it didn't go up and it didn't go down. But this is something that we are closely looking at. And our coordinators, who are now 612, are spending a lot of time in our math classes, working with those teachers and those coaches. So, our highlights are that all middle schools showed positive gains in ELA. All grades in ELA exceeded the state's average growth by eight to 10 points. So, that was good, even though we would like them to, of course, be at our 75% mark. School grade levels with double-digit gains. Hart's School Middle in sixth grade had 20.5-point gains. Darlington Middle in seventh grade had 19.7. And Spalding Middle in eighth grade had 26.9. Two out of the three middle schools showed positive gains in math for the six-eighth average. Sixth grade exceeded the state average growth. And school grade levels with double-digit gains for sixth grade was Hart's School Middle. In our high schools, we have Algebra I, the EOC. You can see each individual high school there. If it is dotted, if I've highlighted it in green, that means that it was growth over the previous year. You have Darlington County's average and then the state average. You will have this at the end for all the elementaries and all the middle schools, too. But here is our graph to kind of show you. You've got Mayo High School in blue. Darlington High in purple. Hart's School High in red. Lamar in kind of that dark charcoal color. The state average is in green. Excuse me, our average is in green. And then, the state average is where you see the dotted line with the triangles. So, in some ways, we have stayed with the state average. And then, others, we've had conversations about, you know, what happened? Why did scores go down? And kind of problem-solving through all of that with those principles. Biology. Let me just go ahead and get on the chart. Kind of take that in. Again, we put together some biology and US history, especially last year. In the second half of the year, we worked really hard putting US history teachers together so that they could plan together and work together. Because in some buildings, there may be five US history teachers, and then another one, there may be one or two. So, putting them together to pair and plan. And the same thing is being replicated this year with biology. English II scores are, you can see, a little bit higher. And again, staying there kind of with the state average. US history, we've had two that grew from last year and two that kind of stayed the same. So, here we go.
When you're saying grew, you mean from a C or better or passing the EOC?
I'm sorry, I didn't tell you that. That's a great question. So, these are C or betters. These are not D or betters. These are C or betters because that is what the report cards are looking at. And we get the most points for this. So, this isn't passage rate. You could have had more kids passing than what this actually reflects. So, yes, these are C or better. That was a good question. And I will say that the US history or the social studies content this year is the state is working on new standards, and those will be out for review, so next year. All right, so I want to look at subgroups because we know that sometimes that's where we get that's where we get some of our ATSI money and extra support money in our subgroups. Do you have any? There we go. All right, so our students, this is for SC Ready, peoples in poverty. If you look at the light blue, light blue is last year, and then the darker blue is this year. We are looking at students who meet or exceed and who are qualified as students in poverty. So, there's some very, there's some bright spots here. We have in third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, we have beat our average from the year before of meets and exceeds with students and peoples in poverty. So, that is something that we want to work on and continue to work on and look at. But that is a positive trend. And this is in ELA. Math, math is an area that we still need to work on and we're concerned about in putting a lot of supports in place with we now have a dedicated K-5 math coordinator working with those CTs and working with the teachers directly in the curriculum. This is also noted to be said that this is the new year for our standards and curriculum being rolled out with math. So, we have the year before, and then we have in the lighter green and the darker green, you have the students who exceeded meet or exceed this year. So, third grade, you see there's upper trend. Fourth grade, upward trend. Fifth, it goes down. Sixth, it comes back up, and then it kind of goes down and up again. However, we would like to see these numbers continue to grow. And one of the questions that we had in SLT today is where were these students in the life of COVID? So, where did they fall? And I said, you know, from my research, and Dr. Ferguson backed me up that there's national research, but if you could read when you went out for the pandemic, you could read when you came back. If you missed fundamental math, there were gaps. And so, one of the things that we're using to close some of those gaps is iReady that will fill in some of those gaps for students in the areas where they may have missed that math instruction. All right, students with disabilities, this is meets and exceeds. So, light blue, last year, or year before last, 23, 24. And then, dark blue is the 24, 25. You can see that there are some areas of growth. Eighth grade actually stood out to me because typically, our students, as they go, get a little older and a little older, the gaps are harder to close. But there was definitely some great growth there for eighth grade and seventh grade. So, that is an area that we are closely watching and working with. Math. Third grade, there was a positive. Math is an area that we need to work on and specialize in. Yeah. We always like to know how we compare to those around us. So, comparing to our districts around us, I'm going to actually show you a chart for this and sort of kind of look at all those numbers. Our state average was 55.4. And then, ours in Darlington was 48.2 for the average. And this is math. And this is science. But this is really what you want to look at. All right, so third grade meets and exceeds. The state average is in a coral pinkish color. And then, we are in the green. And so, that allows you to kind of look at Ori, Lawrence I, Kershaw, Georgetown, Florence III, Marlborough, Chesterfield, Lawrence V, Marion, and Lee.
What's Florence III?
No, Lake City. Five is Johnsonville. I'm competitive, too, so this was interesting. On math, you can see where we stand with our math. A little bit in third grade, a little bit more positive. A lot closer to the state average also. Fourth grade ELA. You can see where we stand compared to the state and where we stand compared to our neighbors. Fifth grade math. State, and then where we stand compared to our others. Fifth grade ELA. Fifth grade math. Sixth grade. Sixth grade math. If you'll notice, one of the things I notice is sometimes the bar graphs are kind of clustered together. We're kind of in line with others, but we would like to be higher. Sixth grade math. Seventh grade ELA. Seventh grade math. Eighth grade ELA. Trend overall is that ELA is higher than math statewide and region-wide. Eighth grade math. And let me remind you, those are the eighth graders. See, some of my high school principals here, those are your ninth graders. So, that has implications for your math classes when students are coming in. Science, this is for fourth grade science. We only test for fourth and sixth.
Does that include the eighth graders who are taking Algebra I? Do they count for the high school?
They count in both places. But we're switching. And we offer Algebra I's. We will not have Algebra, we won't have very many Algebra I's scores this year because of the course sequencing.
Yes, so our now said Algebra I for the honors kids in eighth grade, it's geometry.
It's geometry.
So, we have a year, like next year, there won't be hardly any Algebra I scores because of that. And then, sixth grade science. And then, as you go through, this is the elementary data comparison. I was telling you, too, you all can go through. If it's in blue at the bottom, then that means that that was the higher number. So, for instance, in third grade math, we beat the state average growth by .56. I'll allow y'all to look through that unless Dr. Ferguson wants me to talk you through or you all want me to talk you through each one. But this allows you to kind of look at each school, school by school, and see where there was growth. I do want to point out Thornwell and the growth that they have. But Carolina also had a big growth. We, we had some really big celebrations for some of our folks. And the principals know, because I called them, and I said, "Did you know?" And I know they already knew, but I just wanted them to know again that I was looking at them. There's fifth grade ELA. Fifth grade math. Those are now sixth graders, so there's implications there. So, we're watching, our team is watching that data and working with those teachers. Same thing for middle school. Middle school math. Sixth grade was a strong group. They were a strong fifth grade group last year. So, they were a strong sixth grade group, too, cohort-wise. And I've not broken each of these down into cohorts, but that is my next project. Because they can grow from year to year, but I need to know if the cohort growing when they move. And there's eighth grade. Eighth grade math. And again, this is shared in the presentation with y'all. If you want to, if you're data people like me and you want to dig down in it. Do you all have any questions for me or my team or what we're doing with these results?
I actually wasn't mentioning that. You said it was shared. It says that it's attached, but somehow it's not attached to our agenda. Or it's not familiar. Yeah.
I might have to share it with you as the board for good.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I could do that? Absolutely.
Anybody got any questions?
Well, I, you know, this is, this is
Get off on that horse.
This is my, this is my soapbox. And you certainly have broken this out in a, in a very digestible way. The one thing that I, I have mixed feelings about bringing it up, but I think it does need, is you didn't cover our approaching. And I know that our approaching is still not meeting. But I think for, just like you, I look at this data and I like to shout out to this. But there's a lot, there was a lot of movement from does not meet into approaching.
Yes.
And while it is, it is still not meeting, that's a cohort of kids that, you know, we may not necessarily in one year be able to move them from does not meet to meets. And but seeing that growth, that movement upward was encouraging, even
Absolutely valid, too.
So, so I did, I did want to point that out. And one of the schools in particular that really jumped out with that was Thornwell. And, you know, I just, that was a, there was a lot of movement there that is not reflected up on the numbers that are shown there. So, I will shout that one out for them. So
Was greater than what would be expected, though?
There, there is a lot of movement from does not meet into approaching. This is only the meets and exceeds.
Over previous years, you're saying?
Correct. Yeah.
And Ms. Hessler, I'll just throw out that Dr. Nichols talked about that, but I told her not to include it because approaches doesn't count. So, I just, I want to own that. That is on me, not on Dr. Nichols. Because the assessment results, it doesn't count. It will show up in, in the growth when we release report card results next month, hopefully. And, you know, those growth reports will be there. But that is on me, not on Dr. Nichols. I just wanted to say it for the group.
No, no, that's fine.
I mean, it's a good data point, but I mean, I don't, I agree. I mean, we shouldn't be celebrating
No, right, I don't
the number of, you know, that they still didn't meet. I mean
Correct.
So
But I, but I
But to know that there's growth in other areas.
That there is, that there's movement and there's potential there. The only other thing I would point out is that this test in ELA, because we saw lots of, lots of growth in ELA.
Yes, it's the new test.
But it's a new test.
It is the new test with the new standards. And Dr. Ferguson's going to correct me if I'm wrong. But we don't have, since it's the new test, you can't compare
Right.
to the old sort of, the state average is actually what we're being compared to for that growth. So, we'll see how that plays out with report cards, but I still am fairly hesitant.
So, this coming year will be the first year that we can do year-over-year comparison.
Correct.
And then, this year, we have our the new math standards, so we will not necessarily be able to compare our math.
It'll go to the state average, too. And then, not this school year, but the next school year, we'll all be back on track.
And while there is some shout-out, there, when we were sitting here in 18, 19, 30% of our kids are only that, are meeting standards. We got a lot of room.
Absolutely.
So
Absolutely.
Anyhow, that's all I have. Anybody else?
Yeah. I think, I can't remember what date it was recently. They had a new, after this was released from the state, they talked about from the state, they talked about mass, math. And the math is really down across the state and not just, it's not just dollars. So, I don't want people to feel like, you know, we are so bad that everybody else, you know, it's not that. It's a statewide issue. And ELA across the state is, has shown in growth.
It's hard to say though, because it's a new test.
Well, that's true. But if you, if you're going to talk about new tests, we change the metrics every couple of years.
Every seven.
Every seven.
Seven years.
So, you know, I mean, and the other thing is students change. So, you have to understand, if you, you may have a good crop this year, you may not have that same crop next year.
I think that's what she said she was going to be looking at, cohorts.
Cohorts. And, you know, that's why I included in here what our average was versus the state, so you can look at that at every grade level, at every subject, so you can see, because you're correct, math statewide is down, ELA is up.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Ferguson. Thank you.
Appreciate it. We've got two...
One do I do, one sit down?
Yes.
I want to also thank our administrators, our principals, because we know at the end of the day, they are held accountable. And at the end of the day, whatever growth we've gotten, we've gotten because of their efforts. And they, you know, they need to be congratulated, even though we may not be where we want to be, but better than where we were.
All right. Two our policy items. We have two policy items. One is the, as it relates to the live streaming of our meetings and work sessions, and the other, as it relates to unencumbered time for our school nurses. This will be for first reading. Do y'all want to take these together or do you want to take them separately?
Since it's first reading, I would make the motion to go ahead and accept both of them for first reading.
I have a motion on the table to accept the two new policies for.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion about these two policies? Okay. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Ferguson, it leads us to your update.
So, Mr. Govan stole a little bit of my first talking point, which is that these results do reflect the hard work of teachers, of leaders and families who never give up on a single child, and there is a lot to celebrate in these results. But I think we also have to be clear-eyed about the fact that we are not yet where we want to be. We have made progress, but far too many of our students are still not at grade level. And it's just a reminder that this work belongs to all of us, because every one of these children are our children, and we'll keep moving forward with urgency and purpose. And one of the things that really stood out to me, and it's one thing that Dr. Nichols and I were talking about, is this board takes great pride in being one of the highest paid, if not the highest paid, for teacher salary. And yet, when we look and compare our results against those same districts that surround us, we've got a lot of room to make up in the academic outcomes of our kids. And so, you know, I want to be first in pay in the PD every single year, but I also want to make sure that we are preparing our kids to be the first in the PD, and then eventually the state, because our kids in Darlington, South Carolina are just as smart as the kids in Florence I, Ori County, or Fort Mill. And so, I want to celebrate the progress that we've made, but I also want to point out to everybody listening and all the leaders in the room, we've got a long way to go to get to where I know we can be, and we're going to get there because we're all in it together. So, thank y'all, but we're, we are already hard at work making sure that next year is even better than this year. And so, with that said, I also want to take a few moments and say that there are great things happening in Darlington County today. And so, I want to give us just a glimpse into some of the things that are happening in Darlington County. And so, the first call-out that I want to give is a shout-out to the students at PATE who have been demonstrating respect. The pandas are setting a great example for their peers, and as a special reward for demonstrating respect, they get to select a book from the school's vending machine for books. And so, that's what that top left-hand picture is. The STEM in action, if you notice that the race car driver in the bottom right-hand is from an event we had with Black Creek Elementary, and we were able to work with NASCAR and the Darlington Raceway NASCAR Foundation to have a field day out at the track where students were able to put hands-on learning into place. At DCIT that same week, drivers went out to DCIT and answered questions from students, and they also worked with our fifth grade alert students on building a race car this year in their STEM activity. And so, NASCAR was with those kids' race week, and it's my understanding that that event with those fifth graders took place today at DCIT where they started building their race cars. Also wanted to call out, several of our elementary schools were able to harvest sweet potatoes that they grew over the summer. And, you know, those pictures that I know we've got sweet potatoes from were North Harts one Thornwell Elementary, where they were able to connect science, teamwork, and healthy living. And then the bottom left-hand corner is from Mayo. Students in the digital electronics class were soldering, soldering, not soldering, soldering, and troubleshooting circuit boards and building their robotics and engineering skills. And then, under workforce development, this was a great picture from Darlington Middle School. But just a few weeks ago, we started our ASCEND visits across the district. And so, 261 eighth graders were able to go on their first ASCEND visit of the year to explore careers. And this is one of our young students being able to dress up as a fireman. Keys to Careers is also in full swing. We are on track this year to have our largest class yet. Interview days will happen in just a few weeks, and we are working to ensure that every one of our students that is in those internship classes have either an internship or work-based learning experience. And then tomorrow, our fifth grade students across the district will experience Career Time Tuesdays and will be focused on the construction pathway and the skilled labor. So, there's a lot of work happening in our workforce development space. And then, also want to shout out Carolina Elementary. They hosted their largest ever All-Pro Dads Gathering. It was standing room only, and this event brought together fathers and role models from across the community to come in and stand with those students and learn a lesson about how to be a good dad and how to connect with their students, because what we know is that our schools are stronger when families and staff lead together. And then finally, teachers across this district continue to meet in their PLC meetings and collaborate, ensuring that our classrooms are excellent and are focused on instruction. And so, I want to give out a shout-out to our teachers. And what I think you'll hear from both the discussion on the student academic outcomes and in the update, is that we rise and fall with our teachers. It really doesn't matter sometimes what I do on any given day, because I don't teach a single child, but the teachers in classrooms really do make a difference, and they're moving the needle for kids in a lot of places. And so, one of the things that I challenged myself with, the staff with, is making sure that we were putting together some marketing campaigns to tell our stories. And so, Audrey and Chris put together a video that I want to share with y'all in just a minute, in teachers' own voices, where they are sharing their commitment, their care, and their belief in every child, and how that we are going to turn our vision for excellence into a reality of excellence. And so, I'm going to be quiet and, I think, let you hear from some of Darlington County's very own teachers.
Well, I've been told at a very early age that I was going to be a teacher. And when I decided that, as I look back at my years coming through school myself, I was like, yes, I was doing everything to prepare myself to always be a teacher herself, getting a degree to teach. But now, I see there is a need for our children to value education. So, I became a teacher, and I have not ever regretted that decision, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. And I continue to teach, because seeing a child get that spark for learning and ignite that fire and that passion makes it all work wild.
My favorite part is just seeing them grow as people and defining out what they love.
I absolutely love being a teacher. I know sometimes it can be hard. There are days that you go home and you're like, oh, that was a hard day. But at the end of the day, just getting to see these kids and love on the kids and help them learn and grow to be adults is something that's truly amazing.
I really enjoy the students. I enjoy singing songs, because we love kindergarten. We love songs. We love to dance. I love the students building those relationships every, each and every day. I love the morning greetings, high-fiving my students, getting a hug in the mornings, and just watching them do their very best and work hard every day. And I love when I see that light bulb come on.
It's always there in the back of my mind to produce a student that's going to be viable in our community, that's going to take us where we need to go, maybe the next physicist or chemist that there is out there and that can solve our real-world problems. And that is what I really want, to get them to know that they are important because they are valuable. We're going to need them later in life.
I want a positive classroom, like a classroom family. So, I need, I expect myself to grow a lot. I expect my students to grow and get the best out of the school year.
My expectations for my students is that we'll have even higher EOC scores than we had last year, just because we're going to master that content together. But my expectations for me is just that I even grow in my ability to teach, and not even that, but like adding new ways to teach the material and use the textbook and find cooler ways for them to see that content.
For my classroom, I really want us to grow. I really want us to start not just learning standards, but learning how it all comes together, how it all, and not only that, how we actually are using what we're learning in our everyday life.
I am always in awe of how spectacular our teachers are and how much they have to offer, and the passion they have for helping their students, and how they genuinely love and adore what they do and the students with whom they work, and how they want those children to succeed. That is something that I feel like people don't understand and that sometimes people forget, that sometimes gets lost in translation, that we have teachers who genuinely love what they do and the children with whom they work every single day.
And so, what I know from knowing that Darlington County is staffed with teachers like Ms. Lincolnship, Ms. Lynch, Ms. Bradley, and Ms. Bell, is that the vision for excellence that all of us have can be our reality if we just stay focused and work towards the things that matter to improve student academic outcomes. And so, Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Any questions for Dr. Ferguson?
Where did we share that?
We haven't yet. Y'all are the first to see it. Y'all are the very first to see it. It is hot off the press as of a few hours ago.
We are going to share it, though.
Yes. That's the plan.
All right. Excellent. Any other questions, Dr. Ferguson? All right, Board Member input. Ms. Carrery, do you want to start us off?
I don't have anything right now.
Okay. Ms. Gore?
Well, after the hearing, where our children really are, it's bittersweet. You know, I'm glad that we know where they really are and that we can help them. And I know it's a long progress, but at least we've made a start to make a difference in each child's life. And I believe that we have the right people in place at the right time to bring the children and for them to be able to exceed and meet their needs. Not meet their needs, but bring them closer, because we have more children not meeting than we have meeting. You know, but I don't look at that as being terrible. I'm looking at that as a, is a building that we just can build upon these young people. And I truly believe we have the staff in place that can do it. And next time we hear their data, I'm praying that we have better numbers. You know, I'm not so much worried about what Florence do, I'm worried about what we do, because I want our children to have great numbers, you know, across the board in everything that we are doing. And I like the fact that, you know, a lot of the things that you all are doing is for a well-rounded student. It's just not academic, but you're doing some well-rounded things to develop them into being better students. And I like that the teachers, I like to see teachers that really love what they're doing, because all of us got a teacher somewhere in our life that had really made an impact on our lives. There's a teacher somewhere in all of our background that has made an impact on children's lives. And that one teacher could be the one that turned that child's life around. And I see now that teaching is more than just academic. They love, you know, loving and kindness, and all of these things help make a child develop. So, I thank you all for what you all are doing, and I'm just hoping and saying that let's continue on the road.
Ms. Carrery?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Well, I personally was very impressed with seeing the improvements that were made at all of the schools. And maybe I'm a little bit biased, but my chest went out like a turkey when she read the numbers for Rosemont Elementary and also for Mayo Magnet, and considering where they stand in the state as far as... So, we know that it can be done, it's just having the right people at the right places, because without the principals and the teachers and administrators and the hard work and the love that they share, none of this would happen. So, I want to give a shout-out, as Dr. Ferguson say, to all of the schools, but to especially Rosemont Elementary and Mayo Magnet.
Mr. Jackson?
First, I'd like to thank Dr. Nichols for that report. Something we can actually see, understand, something, you know, we know where we are headed. You know, we still got a lot of improvement to make, but at least I think we're headed in the right direction. So, I do appreciate the way you presented it, and I think everyone can understand, it always been the case, I always, I've been here for a long time, and sometime I hear a report and I say, "What in the heck did they say?" But thank you for that. Appreciate it. And we did have a lot of good teachers and administration, staff, appreciate everything they do, and I think everyone's working hard, and I think we are moving in the right direction. And I think we will get there. And, three? Three? Fantastic. That's amazing. That's the least number ever, right?
That's right.
Appreciate what you're doing and all your staff.
Ms. Govan?
Well, the only thing I'm going to say, number one, I am happy that the employees of this district have put forth a great effort to be sure that we continue to excel. You know, they say it takes the ability of the regular child, well, it takes the whole system in order to make this district successful, regardless of who they are. And I think someone told me when I was teaching that, he said, "You know, I don't have, we don't have the money to pay you what other districts pay." He said, "But we can pay you in kindness and respect." And, yeah, money is important, but you also got to understand the people are people, and we have to treat them like people. The only other thing I want to say is this, I want to... The only other thing I want to say is this, I want to thank all of you for your prayers, thoughts, and concerns concerning my wife and her illness, and continuing to pray for her as she continues in her recovery. That's it.
I only have one thing to add, and I forgot to add it. There was, I did forget to give a shout out to Caroline. Elementary School, one of the districts that wasn't highlighted there was that in several of their grades, they are at 70% almost, and so they are just a few percentage points away from the stated goal of 75% by 2030. So I did want to mention that.
Other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
Fine. Personnel actions. Can I have a motion to approve personnel actions?
I move.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We do have an executive session tonight, and I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
Um, for what do we have?
Personnel matters and contractual matters.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we move into executive session to discuss personnel matters and contractual matters.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into executive session.